Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
You have done, and since that conversation, he has opened up a business buying his first house. So if I can just book five minutes with you with every kid in my church, it'd be great. And I appreciate that, so thank you. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we love you. Thank you for your faithfulness and goodness to us this day. Lord, you said, "If anyone lacks wisdom, let them ask," and you would give liberally, Lord. And we are asking for a liberal dose of your wisdom, God, upon this meeting today, upon these in charge and making decisions, that your Spirit would lead and guide us and direct us, God, that we may see your kingdom come, your will be done in earth as it is in heaven, according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. God bless you.
May I have roll call now, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, today we have two proclamations, one recognition and one presentation. First, we have a proclamation recognizing Monday, June 19th, 2023, as the 75th anniversary of the charter of the Dory E. Miller Post 817 in Beaumont, Texas. And it will be read by Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Dory E. Miller Post was chartered on June 19th, 1948, with the American Legion, and whereas prior to that time, the members of the post were attached to Post 33 as a post, which at that time was identified as a black post. And whereas it was with great foresight and fortitude, the charter members recognized their need to become an independent group of veterans that supported their community and answered the needs of their members. And whereas recognizing this need in the city of Beaumont, the Dory E. Miller Post 817 was birthed. And whereas in celebration of the steadfastness within our community, state, and nation to make a difference in the lives of all veterans today, we celebrate the accomplishments and hereby give our continuous support to the Dory E. Miller Post 817. Now, therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby honor and declare Monday, June 19th, 2023, the 75th anniversary of Dory E. Miller Post 817 Day in Beaumont, and do hereby celebrate this crowning achievement for the veterans and for all of the city of Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Roy West, Mayor, June 13th, 2023. And accepting will be Mr. Clifton Guillory, the commander of Dory Miller Post 817. And sir, if you can come up and you can bring anyone that you would like to come with you.
Thank you. Before I get started on a little bit here, I want to again introduce myself. I'm Clifton Guillory, commander of the post. Also have a very important person here, and these folks here, the adjutant, and I call my chief of staff, Cheryl Williams, and some members here today who came to this important event. Mayor West, thank you for this proclamation. I do want to recognize some members. We got more than Chris Durio in here. There are members that are on this council. We also have a son of the American Legion by the name of A.J. Turner. Turner's mother is also a member of our post, and his sister's also a member of our post. They are veterans also. And I also want to say that for 18 years, former councilmember W.L. Pay was a member of our post before his passing. And we really like that. We've got some more council members, but they're from Port Arthur. We won't talk about that, okay? You know, all of these veterans, and even veterans who are not members of our posts, is in this community. When you go into military service, the first thing you have to do is take an oath. And that oath is what we live by every day as a veteran. And I just want to just read it real quick to you so you can understand folks who have not served in the military, how we live our lives. "We solemnly swear that we will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that we will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and I will obey the orders of the President of the United States and the orders of officers appointed over me in accordance and the uniform code of military justice, so help me God." We make promises to our fellow veterans that we will look out for them, especially the ones that come home who's been injured. All of these veterans have gave some, and they all have friends and family who have gave all, so that we will remain a free nation and have all of the freedoms that's afforded to us in this great country of ours. I love working with our veterans, especially in this area of Beaumont. They're some of the best, kindest, most generous people you ever want to meet. When I embarked on this 23 years ago, I didn't know what to expect. But in my third year as a commander of Dory Miller Post 817, I've got to know great people like this here, and especially Durio, and a little bit from A.J. I need to see him in more meetings, but we'll see about that. 817 is part of a legacy to be proud of. Our mission, we honor our veterans. And the best compliment you can give any veteran is that if something happened to them, you take care of their family, and that's what we do. We looked after their community, and in their community is their church. We try to help with their children, to make sure they are great citizens. We promote Boys State, which we have boys from Beaumont area go to Austin for a week and spend time with all the state representatives, state senators, and learn the process of how you govern. We have an oratorical contest where we got kids who love to speak about the Constitution of the United States, and they go in competition against that, against other schools across the state. We promote and sponsor youth sports, ROTC, all in a charitable way. And also, we make visits to the state Capitol to lobby on veterans' benefits. I am the state chair on the commission, and believe me, we get a lot done. I do want to say that without the members of Post 817, a lot in this community would not happen. And one quick note about Dory Miller himself. He was a young man from Waco, Texas, that just happened to be helping the wounded, because he was a messman. And he saw an unattended anti-craft gun, and he had not ever been trained on it. But he decided to get on it because he watched others train on it, and he shot down a handful of enemy aircraft during Pearl Harbor. And for that, he was honored with the Navy Cross. And that's what we chose back in 1945 to name our post after. Thank you all for this proclamation. I just want to say God bless you all, and God bless this great city of Beaumont. Thank you.
Commander Guillory, could y'all come up here and let's take a picture?
All right, one, two, and three. Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the city of Beaumont's celebration of the Juneteenth holiday, June 13th through the 19th, 2023. Councilman Turner will read it.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans. It is called "Juneteenth," combining with the words "June" and "19th," and has been celebrated by African-American community for over 150 years. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national holiday celebrated, commemoration of ending of slavery in the United States, dating back to 1865. It was June 19th that the Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed to Galveston, Texas, with the news that the war had ended and that enslaves were now free. Whereas on Thursday, June 17th, President Joe Biden signed into law Juneteenth National Independence Day Act S. 475, designating Juneteenth National Independence Day as a legal public holiday. And whereas on June 13th, the city of Beaumont would commence the Juneteenth holiday with a week-long celebration of events, beginning with lunch on the lake from 10:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Downtown Event Center. Also on Tuesday, there will be a proclamation from the mayor. And Juneteenth, recognizing Juneteenth as a national federal holiday and acknowledging the promises, equality, respect, and understanding between people of all backgrounds and cultures. On Friday, June 16th, we will celebrate a classic movie night featuring Black Panther at the Jefferson Theater from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Whereas on Saturday, June 17th, we will host the annual Juneteenth celebration from 3:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the Main Library Outdoor Plaza on Main Street, featuring the iconic Shirley Murdock, renowned for her soulful vocals and chart-topping hits, with greatest stage where her memorizing presence, known for songs such as "As We Lay" and "Husband." Murdock's powerful voice and performance will have been made a sensation with illusions, career spanning over four decades. Also, we will have Williams soul-stirring bellos, including timeless hit, "'Cause I Love You." I think the whole community knows that. And have gone to him and love fan base and established him as one of the most influential voices in his genre. Whereas the event will also feature live music from the best regional musicians, such as Nubonizi and the Troublemakers, Far Cry and the Golden Triangle All-Stars, and hosted by DJ Eric T. of Magic 102.5, as well as line dancing and other entertainment. Food trucks will be on site serving delicious cuisines to satisfy everyone's taste buds. A new attraction will be for the 12-and-under free throw competition with prizes for the winners. Registration for the competition will take place at the event. Whereas the Juneteenth holiday will accumulate on Wednesday, June 21st, with a sundown concert featuring New Soul and The Black Coffee Downtown at the event center at the lakeside from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Roy West, the city of Beaumont do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, as "Juneteenth" in Beaumont, Texas, and urge all citizens to become aware of more of the significance of the celebration of African-American history and heritage of our nation. Accordingly, the mayor has hereby set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we next, we have recognition acknowledging Saturday, June 18th, 2023, as South End Day. Councilman Samuel will read.
Thank you, Mayor. S.E. 4 L. Whereas under the watchful eye of God, we have been blessed to gather as elders, children, grandchildren, and generations of friends. And whereas we celebrate with food, games, activities, good music, and an overall family atmosphere. And whereas on Saturday, June 17th, 2023, we, the people of the historical South End neighborhood of Beaumont, Texas, will gather once again, declaring a day of love, friendship, family, loyalty, dedication, and sacrifice. And whereas we look back on our history, celebrate our achievements, and look forward to the future. And whereas we fondly remember times of love and laughter, well-spent with generations of Charlton Park at daycare, Tillman's Barbecue, CNA, Home Packing, brother-in-laws, Carroll Street Park, Service Grocery Store, Mike's, Lee Street Game Room, Dunbar Elementary, Key Z's, and all the things of the South End. Now, therefore, Mayor Roy West, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim and recognize Saturday, June 18th, 2023, as the official South End Family Day in Beaumont. And we celebrate the unity, the prosperity, the love, the legacy of the South End. And we wish many more South End Days to come. S.E. 4 for L.
Formation would be Gary Wright and the members of the South End Day. Gary?
All right, man. Hey, hey. All right, all right, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, all right. How you doing, bro? Thank you, Quentin. How you doing? All right, all right. How you doing? All right, bro. All right. Yes, sir. Right. All right. Bless you, bro.
All right, one, two, and three. Let's get one more over here. All right, one, two, and three. Excellent, excellent.
At this time, we will have a recognition of our employee service awards with a presentation from our H.R. Director, Mr. Chris Catalina.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We're here to recognize our city of Beaumont employees today that have reached specific milestones in their career, starting at 25 years and moving up. And then we have one special individual that's not here. We'll recognize him as well. So if I could have City Manager and Mayor come down. And Mr. Manager, will you have this list and read out the names, and I'll gather the crystals and boxes?
Thanks, Chris. This is one of the best things that I can do in a year is to recognize our employees. We wouldn't be, we couldn't accomplish what we do without our employees. Council sets policy, City Manager gets it executed, the people that carried out it's our employees. So we can't ever forget how important they are to what we do. So today, we're going to recognize them. And we're going to start with a year 25, 25-year employee. And it's with police, administration, and civilians, Ms. Laurie Witterstatter. Next, with Police Department Criminal Investigations, Mr. Aaron Lou Allen. Planning Department, Adena Josie. Traffic Management, Gordon Hughes. Recreation, Donald Falk. Fire Department, Fire Suppression, Keith Nolan. Keith's not here. Okay. Fire Department, Freddie Huff, 30 years. I'm sorry, 30 years. Let me go back and get the years. Ms. Witterstatter was 25 years. Mr. Lou Allen was 25 years. Adena Josie was 25 years. Gordon Hughes was 25 years. And Don Falk was 25 years. And now we'll go back up to Fire Department again for Mr. Freddie Huff. Freddie Huff for 30 years. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. That's what happens to them. Fire Prevention, Thomas Gallavis, 30 years. We'll move up to 35 years, Mr. Joseph Condena II, Fire Prevention. Joseph couldn't be with us this afternoon. And then we have another fire administrator. And I don't know who this guy is, but it's Mr. Errol White, 40 years. And last, we have one last addition, Mayor. Spec and recognition for 45 years goes to our Sergeant, Gabe Durso, who could not make it today. Okay, that's good. That'll be it. Thank you.
There'll be a small reception in the first-floor conference room of the city of Beaumont recipients who received awards today, and we're going to take a 10-minute break right now.
Any other?
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number one, please?
Council, consider amended resolution 21-292 to cancel the remaining vehicles on order with Silsby Ford. Back in November 2021, council ordered to purchase the 20 vehicles. There's been a 17 month delay in getting all of them. Only 12 have been received and two were canceled in a previous resolution. So today, staff is asking for, consider amending the resolution to cancel the remaining vehicles on that prior resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, are these vehicles, the ones that had not been approved? I know we recently approved other vehicles. Did it actually offset it? And we have as a city what we need now on the way?
Yeah, so these are a different set of vehicles. Last week was police vehicles. We got those ordered from the same vendor, just another outlet. These six vehicles is just caught up in the supply chain. And we just want to be able to counsel our way out of, out of that appropriation for these. It's been long enough. We want to be able to pursue other vendors and see if we can get these six vehicles in.
Okay, so yeah, those six additional, we're looking to pursue other options to get them in. All right, thank you. That's the clarity I needed.
Any other? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council, consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget. This is in order to fund a burden to repairs approved by council for Long Street. Funds will be transferred from the general fund to the streets and drainage capital fund. And the proposed amendment is for $2 million 444,000, which makes the final amended budget for project 148,604,400. And staff is recommending approval.
Have we done the motion for this?
No.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What's going on with Long Street, Bart?
There was a cavity with the storm drain that runs along Long Street. That's also under BNSF's rail spur that feeds the port. So there's several emergency contracts that y'all have approved that are underway. One is with Brastar to do the point repair at that, where that cavity formed. Another is with a local engineering firm to construct an E80 rated box to, to put in place of, of where that cavity formed, so that it's fixed appropriately for the rail. And then also Vortex is out there doing grout injections to fill cavities along the line. The only remaining piece that's yet to be done is we'll come back one more time to get a contract to geocrete line the inside of the storm drain and for a final repair, which is exactly what we did with the thread needle outfall that went through ExxonMobil. So that's, that's basically what's going on there.
All in favor of approval?
No, I was just going to ask, is this 2.4, does that cover the overall cost for Long Street?
It's not going to cover everything because we haven't got to the lining yet.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Felsch. Could you give us an update on the progress? Where, you know, we're adding it.
The cavity has been opened up. The slab seal's been poured on the bottom. We should receive the plans from the engineer on the E80 box by Friday. Then we'll send those over to BNSF for their blessing for that repair. And then Brastar will pour in place the, that E80 box. That'll probably take two to three weeks because you have to pour the floor and then you have to let it cure. And then you have to pour the walls. And so there's a, there's some stages there. The grouting that's going on right now started Monday of last week, and they hope to be done no later than 45 days, but, but closer to 30 or 35 days, depending on weather. They're working seven days a week to, to do that grouting. And I don't have an answer on the lining yet because we haven't got an approval from the railroad to, to get that put in place.
So if you had to make a guesstimation on completion, what would you say?
If completion is the lining of that line, I, I really can't because I don't know when BNSF will give us approval. If completion in your mind is get the rail back operational, that should be, I would guess at this point right now, maybe August.
What about the total project?
It'd probably push into the fall, I would guess, because we're going to, we're going to have to do the geocrete lining. And I don't even have approval yet from BNSF, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Dura.
Two questions. One, what part of Long Street is this?
The cavity is right close to Pine, right there in front of Olmsted.
Okay. And also, they're going to have to, I know when we did that cavity under railroad tracks at Florida and Avenue A, then we had to have those people out there flagging the trains. So we're going to have to do that on this one also?
Well, right now, the line's closed down, so we don't have to have any.
The rail line is closed?
Yes, sir. The rails actually pulled up at the point of the cavity. I did have a conversation with BNSF this week on, well, no, I think it was late, late last week. But we had a conference call with them and the Federal Railroad Commission. I brought up the subject of once the rail goes into operation, and BNSF said they would provide the flaggers on this project for us.
Any citizen who wishes to speak, you may make public comments on items on the consent item agenda or regular agenda items one to four. If you haven't already done so, please complete a green slip and hand it to the city clerk. The city clerk will call your name when it is your time to speak. We would appreciate it if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any mayor.
Okay, we'll proceed. Is there a motion and a second for their approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Did, was there any local participation with CDM Smith?
Yes, I believe Chica and Associates is a sub on that one.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Felschau.
And Bart, could you go ahead and explain for everyone why there's no, the funding there is not listed, the amount?
This is a professional services bid request for qualifications. So you, by state law, you determine the winner based upon the best qualifications submitted within the proposals. Once it's awarded, we'll go into discussions with CDM Smith on the pricing.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Counsel, consider amended resolution 21-292 to cancel the remaining vehicles on order with Silsby Ford. Back in November 2021, council ordered to purchase the 20 vehicles. There's been a 17-month delay in getting all of them. Only 12 have been received and two were canceled in a previous resolution. So today, staff is asking for, consider amending the resolution, cancel the remaining vehicles on that prior resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, are these vehicles, the ones that had not been approved? I know we recently approved other vehicles. Did it actually offset it and we have as a city what we need now on the way?
Yeah, so these are a different set of vehicles. Last week was police vehicles. We got those ordered from the same vendor, just another outlet. These six vehicles is just caught up in the supply chain and we just want to be able to counsel our way out of that appropriation for these. It's been long enough. We want to be able to pursue other vendors to see if we can get these six vehicles in.
Okay, so yeah, those six additional, we're looking to pursue other options to get them in. All right, thank you. That's the clarity I needed.
Any other? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number two, please?
Counsel, consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget. This is in order to fund a burden to repairs approved by council for Long Street. Funds will be transferred from the general fund to the streets and drainage capital fund. And the proposed amendment is for $2,444,000, which makes the final amended budget for project 148,604,400.
Have we done the motion for this?
No.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mike?
What's going on with Long Street, Bart?
There was a cavity with a storm drain that runs along Long Street. That's also under BNSF's rail spur that feeds the port. So there's several emergency contracts that y'all have approved that are underway. One is with Brastar to do the point repair at that, where that cavity formed. Another's with a local engineering firm to construct an E80-rated box to put in place of where that cavity formed so that it's fixed appropriately for the rail. And then also Vortex is out there doing grout injections to fill cavities along the line. The only remaining piece that's yet to be done is we'll come back one more time to get a contract to geocrete line the inside of the storm drain and for a final repair, which is exactly what we did with the thread needle outfall that went through ExxonMobil. So that's basically what's going on there.
All in favor of approve?
Councilman Taylor had a question. No, I was just gonna ask, is this 2.4, does that cover the overall cost for Long Street?
It's not gonna cover everything because we haven't got to the lining yet.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Felschau. Could you give us an update on the progress? Where, you know, we're adding it.
The cavity has been opened up. The slab seal's been poured on the bottom. We should receive the plans from the engineer on the E80 box by Friday. Then we'll send those over to BNSF for their blessing for that repair. And then Brastar will pour in place that E80 box. That'll probably take two to three weeks because you have to pour the floor and then you have to let it cure and then you have to pour the walls. And so there's some stages there. The grouting that's going on right now started Monday of last week and they hope to be done no later than 45 days, but closer to 30 or 35 days depending on weather. They're working seven days a week to do that grouting. And I don't have an answer on the lining yet because we haven't got an approval from the railroad to get that put in place.
So if you had to make a guesstimation on completion, what would you say?
If completion is the lining of that line, I really can't because I don't know when BNSF will give us approval. If completion in your mind is get the rail back operational, that should be, I would guess at this point right now, maybe August.
What about the total project?
It probably push into the fall, I would guess because we're gonna have to do the geocrete lining and I don't even have approval yet from BNSF, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
Two questions. One, what part of Long Street is this?
The cavity is right close to Pine, right there in front of Olmsted.
Okay. And also, they're gonna have to, I know when we did that cavity under railroad tracks at Florida and Avenue A, then we had to have those people out there flagging the trains. So we're gonna have to do that on this one also?
Well, right now, the line's closed down, so we don't have to have any.
The rail line is closed?
Yes, sir. The rails actually pulled up at the point of the cavity. I did have a conversation with BNSF this week on, well, no, I think it was late last week. But we had a conference call with them and the Federal Railroad Commission. I brought up the subject of once the rail goes into operation and BNSF said they would provide the flaggers on this project for us.
Oh, okay. So the trains that were using that track since it's closed, are they being rerouted or something?
I believe they're having to reroute through KCS's line to get into the port.
All right, thank you.
All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number three, please?
Counsel, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two to the contract with Alco LLC for the Collier Ferry Pump Station project. The original project was an amount of $25,88,290. That was one previous change order in the amount of $152,935. This proposed change order number two is an amount of $18,900 and is required to reroute a power pole along with an overhead electrical crossing over Pine Street. No additional days to be added to the contract for the work and if approved, change order number two will result in a new contract amount of $25,260,94. Funding source, capital program in FEMA and recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
So move for approval.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. The public hearing is now open. City manager, will you read the public hearing?
Emergency demolition, let's skip one. Yes, emergency demolition. This is, we have some structures that have been inspected by building codes division found to be unsafe and structures is defined by the city of Beaumont's code of ordinances. Sources may be including general funds and community development block grant for demolition of these buildings and recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
I need you to read the public hearing notice to receive comments and to consider their approval.
Okay.
I got it. To receive comments to consider their approval of an ordinance declaring 2545 Dogwood Garage Apartment Only Structure to be unsafe, substandard structure and ordering the immediate removal of the structure by the city forces. Tina, is there anyone that'd like to speak?
I'm sorry, no, there's no one.
Would you like to hear the staff report?
So Mayor and Council, as you see in your packet, this is a request for emergency demolition for this property. If you look in your packet, the photographs, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. You have an accessory building to the rear, which is leaning severely to the point that we thought it was in best interest to bring it to council in an accelerated manner in order to order the demolition. We have reached out to the property owner and have not received response.
Councilman Felschau? Is the owner, do they live on the premises?
Well, so the owner is under a Terry trust with an ownership address of Austin, Texas. So no one lives in this structure.
But I mean, I'm assuming this was next to a house?
Yes, sir, it is.
But the owner's not living there in that?
Not in this structure.
No, no, but in the other structure, the house?
Not to my knowledge.
The public hearing is now closed. May we have the reading of item number one, please? I mean, four.
We'll go back to that one. Orders of demolition. This is for a building that's been inspected by building codes and found to be unsafe. And according to the code, additionally, these structures have been deteriorated to a condition that are no longer suitable for repair. So staff is recommending demolition of this property and approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a second. There's a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Any discussion? Councilman Neal?
So I don't recall ever having a single property like this brought before. Maybe it has, but surely this isn't the only one in town that is under needing to be tore down in an emergency situation.
To our knowledge, it is. So in other words, most of these, as you know, are brought forward in a packet of 30, 40, 50. But on occasion, we come across a structure that is of such concern. And again, if you look in your packet, like slide number three of the attachment, you can see it's of an urgent concern. And so we don't do these very often, maybe once every year or so. But again, when it's this, again, I would encourage you to look at slide nine of nine of your attachment and you can see that it's of such concern that we bring it to you in an accelerated manner.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If this is approved today, how long from approval to demolition?
Terry purchasing, couple days, couple weeks? Within a week.
With the exception of if the owners or owners come forth and file a TRO, that would be the only thing to delay the process.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Neal?
Will we file a lien on the property?
We will not because it's residential.
All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. At the close of city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of economic development negotiations in accordance with section 551.087 of the government code to wit specifically Project Gemstone Castle Shield. Consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property in accordance with section 551.072 in the government code to wit Downtown Hotel. Consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section 551.071 of the government code, The Claim of Catherine Goodman. Consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section 551.071 of the government code, Caleb Fenter versus City of Beaumont and Christopher S. Boone, calls number B210244. International Association Firefighters Local 399 versus City of Beaumont, Kenneth R. Williams in his official capacity as city manager and Earl White in his official capacity as fire chief, calls number D210950. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment, please complete a green slip, hand it to the city clerk. The city clerk will call your name when it is your time to speak. We would appreciate it if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time is up.
Charlie, Charlene Sam? I have no address, just Ward three. Could you give your address for the record, please? I didn't hear you. Just, you can say it in the mic, I'll get it later.
2370 Monroe Street.
Thank you.
The pound has pointed their finger at City Hall and that's why I'm here. I have regularly contacted you all for six months and with the exception of Mr. Getz, I have gotten no response. They provide solutions to problems that these city ordinance cause. Yet you, Mr. Samuel, who ran for Ward three again, sat in your office and told the news, it's not a one-man show. Their history matters. So let me share with you some history. This free-living ordinance for cats is out of control and so is the owner across the street. It allows cats to become territorial over places where they do not live and cat owners to have a mindset of embolment volatile entitlement. Yesterday, this cat owner came to my home to argue about me shooing one of her six to 10 cats away with my hands. And she has that many because the cats have had babies. All of them stay at my house, on my porch, under my house, around my trees, in my yard daily. And she allows this. She doesn't care that I don't want them there. She's hollering at me in my driveway, pounding her fist, saying these are effing outside cats. They can go where the eff they want to go and I'm going to allow it. And I wish the eff you would run them away again. I called the police on her. So I'm telling you, this cat ordinance is a problem. So I'm telling you, what is going to happen with this? Because in what world do city leaders allow such ordinances that cause these kind of problems and cause them to continue? What city leaders allow bias towards cats that it does not give dogs the right to do? Dogs, just like cats, carry fleas that keep your yard infested, bite, scratch, dig, assert their will, hissing at you, bearing down, defending themselves not to leave. So the only reason all of us are in this room together today is because there lived a man who believed that change was the path forward. And he prioritized that. And today, it seems to me that you city leaders are prioritizing cats' freedoms over humans' freedoms. Cats to be at places where they are unwanted over human beings' right to have a peaceful life at their own home. This lady should be forced to have these cats fated and neutered. And after nine complaints, she should be able to, the city should be able to pick these cats up.
Thank you.
Beginning Hernandez Smith, 1080 Shakespeare Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you all. I think that we all share the same sentiment that we are saddened that there is some significant small businesses that are closing. Willie Burger, Crown Pizza, Poor Brothers, and then just recently, this morning, Bruno's on feeling. I've spent almost two decades helping small businesses and the biggest problem with small businesses is that the owner, it's hard for the owner to detach from that business, but it's important and imperative that the owner detaches to be able to educate themselves in order to be able to sustain and grow their business. So today, I am very excited to announce that my organization, Breathe Consulting LLC, an economic and workforce development company, and Lift Fund have partnered together to bring the Grow Now Beaumont Accelerator, a comprehensive training program to Beaumont and Southeast Texas small businesses. This program is funded in part through a cooperative agreement with the U.S. Small Business Administration, SBA's grant. On Tuesday, June 20th, we will kick off this new program in downtown Beaumont at Edison Plaza hosted by our friends Hancock Whitney. During the week, 20 small businesses in our area will be trained on the business model canvas, branding, digital marketing, sales strategy, and business financials and funding. This program will signify Lift Fund's official presence in Southeast Texas as a lending resource to our small businesses. Just a little about Lift Fund. It is a national nonprofit community development financial institution founded in 1994 that supports small businesses with limited access to capital through small business loans and no-cost consultation services for their dreams of entrepreneurship. Lift Fund provides a hand up to small business owners so that they have a chance to succeed, providing millions of dollars in micro and small business loans to diverse, hard-working entrepreneurs with a 96% successful repayment rate. For every $1 lent, there is a positive economic return of $14. Daily, thousands of small businesses and entrepreneurs are denied capital and tap into high-interest rate debt and predatory lenders that cost more than they can afford. We believe everyone deserves the opportunity to build a company successfully with capital, no matter their background, race, ethnicity, sexual identity, or geography. Lift Fund provides direct capital to clients including SBA Micro Loans, SBA Community Advantage, SBA 504 Loans, and EDA Loans in our 15-state footprint. This is an exciting time and opportunity for our small businesses in Beaumont and Southeast Texas. Can I just finish a couple more sentences? Is that okay? It is too often that we see our businesses close and we must come together to assess their needs to save, sustain, and grow our businesses. On Saturday, June 24th, we will have a graduation to celebrate all businesses who completed this inaugural program. And I would like to invite all of city council to attend and congratulate these entrepreneurs on their commitment and investment in themselves and their business that contribute to our healthy economy. I will personally send all of you invitations and would really love to see your faces there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, and other city staff, other concerned citizens. At this point in time, I have so much to say, I don't know really where to begin. But I'll start by saying thank you for putting on a Juneteenth activity. Juneteenth is a very important day to me. It's my birthday. So thank you. I never worry about it. I party on my birthday. The main thing I don't have a lot of information on, I haven't fully read the article, but I think there are some problems that may exist pertaining to the homeless issue of them attempting to obtain or put together the seven acres somewhere near Highway 124 somewhere. I see problems with that. I will not go into discussion or details as to problems I see on that particular issue right now. The main issue I wish to discuss and talk about right now is that as a senior citizen, the city of Beaumont offers a discount on your water bill. Personally, I don't know if it's because of my age or what, but if I don't see something, I don't know if I'm getting it or not. Now, the city's water bill comes out. I filled the application. They're saying I'm getting a X number of dollars, 20-some-odd-dollar deduction because of a senior citizen. I don't see that on my bill. Any other bill I receive, it has credits, minus, and all types of things of that nature. So what I'm saying is that what I don't see, I don't believe, I don't, I'm giving it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon to the city manager, mayor, council members and staff and to everyone, senior citizen that has stood here before me. The water bill, I did speak on last week that it took over a year to get and it is hard to follow. However, what I am concerned about is you have a contractor that's on Eastern Standard Time. I don't understand why we can't get anybody closer because I pay my bills late at night. And if you pay it late and it's on Eastern Standard Time... And if you pay it late and it's on Eastern Standard Time, then guess what? You got a late fee. And I've been subjected to that. And however, we have a communication department that was later discussed. And I guess that's after citizens complained. But that's an issue that I hope can be resolved through communication as well as having City Council meeting at 3:30, 1:30, or whatever. I like 3 o'clock because more people can come. So I hope that, you know, coming toward this budget year, you'll think about people other than retired people that can participate in governmental issues. One of the things is when we're called up to the podium and I notice the young lady didn't put her address. And I've done that too before. But I'm asking if the citizens have to do their address when the roll is called for each one of you so that citizens will know where you live or what ward you represent? Why not put your address? I mean, it's no secret, and that is something that I'm asking for. I've had a gunshot in my window. It's okay to put my address because if they shot one time, okay, they know where I live. And that was never investigated, but I'm not afraid. The other thing is, we talk about Sections 551087, and that has to do with open records. And I noticed this gemstone castle shield we've never been explained as citizens. And I don't know when we get to be privy to know what these projects are. But it seems like you put it on the open record agenda and then go into executive session. And because these governmental sections allow you to do close if you want to, then, you know, you're still not being transparent. You're leaving us out. And we don't need to know everything because we put our trust in you. But we should have to have, or should have, some kind of explanation. If you're reading this agenda, who knows what Section 551072 is? So that's what I'm asking. Another thing is change order. We talked about that last time. So it looks like consistent, you know, because of supply chain or whatever, change orders. Why can't we get these contractors to know and to stick to their issues of getting whatever it takes to do whatever the agreement is? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Have a good evening.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for City Council members' comments. And we'll start with Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to remind everyone that yesterday was the 60th anniversary of the assassination of Megasavers. And I just want you to remember that, what a lot of people went through and did for us to have the rights that we have today. Also, I want to speak on, this past weekend, there was a shooting in Ward Four at Alice Keith Park. And police, they're asking for help. Asking if anyone that have videos, has any information to contact them. It's, this is your community. This is your neighborhood. And you have to, we need help. If they need help, you should help them. So we can get this figured out, find out who did this. Someone lost their life. A 50-year-old man lost his life, and he was basically a bystander. So if you know anything, I think the number is 409-838-1234. Give them a call. Also, if you're planning on having these large gatherings in city parks, it would be good if you would contact the police ahead of time. I don't know if, that way they can come by a little more often just to, just to ride by and check and make sure everything is going okay. So just so they can have a presence and show themselves to be there. Also, I want to congratulate my American Legion Post, Dora Miller, 817, on their 75th anniversary. Invite everyone out to the Juneteenth celebration Saturday from 3 to 8. We got a lot going on. Y'all, it was a lot of hard work put in by staff and Councilman Turner and city manager. And so y'all come on out and enjoy it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope everybody survived the storm without any damage and that you have your electricity back here in Beaumont. So many people were affected by that. I know people were upset that it was taking so long to get their power back on. What people need to realize is that that storm kind of came up fast. And energy did bring in a lot of crews from out of state and started up in Hardin County and where they really had more damage. And I think there's people still without electricity in Hardin County. But, you know, I think most people have their lights back on in Beaumont. Want to also thank the Mayor, yourself, and Councilman Durio for getting out in front of that issue that happened at Alice Keith Park. I saw that y'all participated in a press conference and asked for people to come forward that saw anything. And that's, that's important for the public to see a proactive response by their elected officials. And I appreciate that. The last thing, I want to express my congratulations to all the employees for their service, for their longevity. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
I'd like to congratulate our employees as well. As our city manager stated, they the ones who make this thing go to the day to day, and I appreciate it. And I want to do a special shout out to South End Day Charts and Parlor Park. I go out there every year, and it just feels good to see communities come together, celebrate heritage, culture, and just simply have a good time. I was able to host a fundraiser this weekend. It was called Lennon and Sundresses, and the Brothers of America Safari raised multiple thousands of dollars and gave out scholarships to our youth. And I think it's important that sometimes you can party with a purpose. Ibe Love Track will have Sunday, I mean, we have a Saturday Fun Day, this Saturday, from 9 to 6. And the whole community is invited. There'll be kids participating in track from all over Southeast Texas. They'll have games, music, food trucks, the whole nine. It's from 9 to 6. Juneteenth, as you know, my favorite holiday. It will take place this Saturday. And as Councilman Durio stated, staff has worked extremely hard. And we said all the time, we say it's not nothing to do in Beaumont, but we have multiple events going on Saturday. So I'm pretty sure someone can find pretty much anything to do. To staff, Mr. Williams, can I get a copy of the cat ordinance sent to me? I know we have hundreds of ordinances. Some of these ordinances were, came about for many years. And sometimes it's good to look at things to see if we can revisit them. So if someone can email me that ordinance, I greatly appreciate it. And also, I would like verification to know, I'm not a senior citizen, so don't show them my water bill. But I would like to know on water bills, if the discount actually shows. I think that's important, you know, you know, you could say it, but I'm one of them people. I want to see it too myself physically. So I would like to know if that actually shows on the water bill. And nextly, I would like to know, can we get an update on our strategic plan? Can we get an update on the salary study? I would like, I would like to know if I can get, we can get an update on the downtown plan? And can we possibly know timelines with the TERS and the other economic development things we discussed? The vacant buildings, the vacant buildings specifically downtown that we discussed, and other possible revenue sources? I like the fact that we're having these discussions, but I do think it's very important that we put hard timelines on what we don't want to exceed to get a follow up on them. So I'm asking if we can get timelines and an update on all these plans that are going. A lot of community is very excited about the plans, but I like when people ask me, I could give you a rough estimate of when it will be produced. So I think that's extremely important. And lastly, we've been putting a lot of work with bar owners and the police department. Me, Councilman Getz, had a meeting, and I would like to, maybe we could send the entire council an update on what are some of the things that are proposed so everybody can know what's going on. But we had some issues where at nighttime, at nightlife, we had some shootings and possible things take place. And we were trying to do something similar to a nightlife task force. I think most of the work is done. I think it'd be good to kind of let the council know and see how everybody feels about the overall plan moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Felschall.
Just congratulations to our employees. Thank you for your many years of service. You make us better and stronger because of your institutional knowledge. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Audwin Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the city manager for his response to some questions and concerns that came from the community about our park, about Magnolia Pool. I was very disappointed to hear that the Magnolia Pool would not be opening. But I did find out that is because of some historical problems that existed. And I understand now we're moving toward trying to get those rectified. However, it does kind of bother me that we did not find that out until it's time for the pools to be utilized. However, I did find that because of an inspection and some investigations, there were some things that had to be done. And a decision was made to get those things done before opening. So with that, I hope that the city staff will continue to look for ways of getting some type of water utilities or jumpees or something out in the park that would allow the young people an opportunity to enjoy the summer and enjoy the park and enjoy water at the parks. I think after a long year of school, the kids deserve to have something to do at the parks. So I understand that is being considered. Some things are being considered. I'd like for us to move pretty quickly with that because now is the time that they are free. And we want to allow them to have opportunities to do some things that kids like to do in the summer. And another issue that I did find from, and I thank you, Mr. Williams, for looking into it. But there's a citizen that did not know what alternatives they had to a decision that was made to the Board of Adjustments. And really, I think it's important that we understand some issues are applicable to, to the city manager. And there are some issues that are applicable directly to council. It's one thing to say that we inform the citizen. But in practice, I think we need to make sure that each citizen that has gone before a board or commission and been rejected, there should be something in writing that will tell them what their options are. If they've exhausted the options within the city, then we need to make sure that there's something that can be said that will show them that they have an option outside the city. And that may be through courts, even though we hope that we can resolve issues. But they need to know if they've reached all options that are available through the city so that they can then move forward in identifying another means of addressing their concern. And again, I say thank you to the city staff, Mr. Manager, for your efforts to respond immediately to our citizens. That's important. But I also think it's important to know and acknowledge when some things are not efficient or not responsive enough. And for us to be upon the summer season without swimming pool, with one swimming pool throughout our city, that's, in my opinion, is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Samuel. Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all the employees that were recognized today for their many years of service. Second thing, Mr. Manager, here a couple of weeks ago, we had a workshop on the homeless situation. And one of the ideas that was floated around was having a homeless camp. There was an article that came out here the last week or so that led a lot of people to believe that it was going in a specific location. And I'd like to see if we could have a workshop as a council to discuss that item and see if we can get this a little bit better defined. I do agree with Councilman Getz on the concept behind that. I think that there's some things that that would help us with. But I think that we just need to have a meeting with the entire council to discuss more about the location specifically.
Thank you, Councilman Neal. Councilman Samuel.
Yeah, there's one additional concern I did write I wanted to address. The young lady with the cats. I happen to operate a business in the Old Town District. And one of the remedies that you may have available to you is through animal control, they will come out and place traps for the cats. And that might be something that's considered. I do believe we do have an issue with cats running free. And everybody doesn't feel the same way. Because there, I had a previous experience. And there are some people that will go and feed cats, put out food for cats that run loose. That is humane, and I understand that. But I too know what comes with that. When flea season, fleas getting in houses, I understand that. Just like with dogs, the waste being left in your yard when you try, want to go out and enjoy your yard. So there are some remedies. I think there's been a call for a copy of the ordinance to look at. But there are some things that, that's in place now that can give some relief. And you don't have to be the culprit for asking for traps to be set out for these cats that's running free. But I'll visit with you after the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Samuel. City Attorney?
I have a few things. First, to address the citizen, Ms. Allen, as it relates to items that are discussed in executive session. The way it's posted, Section 551.087 relates directly to economic development negotiations. Because it is a negotiation, those projects that are being discussed are also being discussed with other entities or other municipalities as well. And so to give or to not give away our city's negotiating platform, they are discussing executive session. When and if those projects are awarded to the city, they are brought forward for public discussion in the form of a public hearing or workshop presentation to be presented to the public and for council to consideration as a body and as a whole. But while they are in the negotiation process, they are posted in executive session just for the purpose of not giving away the city's advantage. And anytime you see the heading posted, the following section afterwards is a section that relates directly to that section for you to look up. So even in the following example with the downtown hotel section, that 55.072 section deals with the purchase and exchange of lease of property. So the heading always follows the law in which it references. So if you have questions about that, obviously, you have my contact number. We can talk about it afterwards. Or for any citizen, you can email me, and I'm happy to explain that to you as well. Next, our very own Gordon Williams, who is in the back, and I really would like him to come out. Gordon, will you come out so everyone can see your beautiful face? Gordon Williams, he is the Lamar University Television News Station Operation Manager. There's Gordon. Gordon, Gordon will be receiving a congressional recognition on June 16th from 4 to 6 by Representative Brian Babin at Lamar University Theater for his achievement in media related to his black experience in history in Southeast Texas region. Most notably, the example, and they will talk about us, the Charton Paul story, both of which have received state, national, and international acclaim. The accommodation will take place during the 80-year anniversary of the Beaumont Race Rides in 1943. And this is homegrown right here in Beaumont, Texas. We have history in the making. We are very, very proud of Gordon. He, I know he hates this, but, but I think it's important that you see and recognize and give people their flowers and their due. Thank you so much, Gordon. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone, our council and mayor and members of the day, it's Happy Father's Day. You know, Father's Day as a daddy's girl is extremely important to me. But during a time when we, we notice how short life is and how precious those moments are, I know that I hope, I hope that you guys are spending that time with your family, importing some wisdom with your sons and your daughters, taking them all to Florida. wisdom with your sons and your daughters, taking them all to Florida, and sharing those memories. And a big special shout-out to my daddy, the best daddy in the world, Ronald Bassett. Okay, and that's it.
Thank you, City Attorney. Public Works Director, please. Mr. Boone?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Ellis.
I'd like to congratulate Gordon also, and also state he's an excellent salsa dance
I'd just like to congratulate Gordon as well, and to wish my 86-year-old dad a Happy Father's Day.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. A few things again. Congratulations to staff for what they do and what they're recognized for. Beaumont's very fortunate to have long-term employees like we do. Most cities don't have people that have the tenure in the city like they do, so we're very fortunate to have that. Not to, not to, it makes sense what councilors may comment on, but for the people in the audience, whenever you make public comments, staff will be following up with you on your issues or whatever problem you state, someone will contact you. So make sure we have your contact information, so we do contact you to solve your issue or to get more information. And lastly, I'd just like to say thank you, congratulations to the council on our bill passing. We got a notification that our bill passed the legislature today for the hotel, a bill there, Bill 5031. I get the number mixed up. It changed. Anyway, congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. And I want to also congratulate all our employees and Gordon as well. That's quite an accomplishment. And I also want to mention that JP Locke's Football Camp is this Saturday from 9 to noon, and it is, it is free. He is, plays in the NFL. He is from Beaumont. Other NFL players will be there. There was a registration period, but he has put it out that it is open. Just show up about 30 minutes early if you would like to participate. It's a great opportunity for our young people to go to the football camp, but also get to see a bunch of NFL players, which is, which is pretty cool. And we are certainly reminded from this past weekend with the weather that came through and the power outage, that being good neighbors, let's make sure that we know who our neighbors are and check with them in such times, and certainly there are more people, there are people that are more medically fragile or older that power outages can have a bigger effect on, so please be a good neighbor. I would also just like to bring to attention a couple of items. I'd like to, for us to investigate an ordinance review committee to review a lot of the ordinances, because there's a lot of ordinances, and within, several of them have been brought to my understanding that there's a lot of older ones that may need to be reviewed, and maybe if we can have various committees reviewing different sections of ordinances, since that's pretty involved. And also some city council efficiencies and possibly moving that time for that to be also something that we review soon. And I certainly thank everybody for their presence today and for the discussions. So we are now recessed into executive session.